Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Planning Commission Work Session. First, a couple of opening remarks. Number one, Chair Hayes will not be in attendance this evening. We wish him well. Number two, I wanted to make it sort of second of all, ZCPA two thousand and twenty-one dash zero 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 one Dulles High Point was scheduled to be first on the list, and we're going to move that down to number three tonight. And then finally, I just want to make it clear, this is a Loudoun County Planning Commission Work Session item, and as a work session, there will be no public hearing. We welcome the public to attend and listen, but there will be no comments from the public. Likewise, questions and comments from the applicant will be addressed only when asked. So with that, I'd like to ask for the review and adoption of the meeting minutes. Oh, sorry. As is our standard, we'd also like to stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now I will ask for the review and adoption of the minutes. Mr. Combs.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I move that the Planning Commission approve the minutes for the Loudoun, Loudoun County Planning Commission Work Session dated June ninth, and the minutes for the Loudoun County Planning Commission Work Session dated June fif- fifteen, sixteen, fifteen?
Fifteen.
Sixteen.
It's sixteenth in the, in the minutes.
Yeah. So whichever one of those people like best, approve them as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any comments, changes, or revisions to either the June ninth or the June sixteenth work session items, minutes? Seeing none, I'll ask the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero one with Commissioner Hayes absent. Okay, that gets us to our first work session item. The first, oh geez, sorry, it's a little rusty. Yeah, I got it. So at this point, we'll do disclosures. Commissioner Merrifield.
I've had several phone conversations with Bill Steedley, a resident of Red Hill Road, regarding the Red Hill Road CPAM. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kirchner.
Please.
Yes, Commissioner Combs.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. On June eighth, I had a video conference with Commissioner Frank, Colleen Gillis, and James Brothers regarding the Hyde Park rezoning application. On, bear with me here, on June thirteenth, I had a telephone call with Cliff Kiers of Broadlands regarding the Hyde Park application. And on Monday, June eleventh, I had exchanged emails and had a telephone call with Dave Kutschda, resident of Ashburn, regarding the True North Data Center construction project as well as various other data center projects.
Thank you, Mr. Combs. Commissioner Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair. On July eighth, I had a Zoom meeting regarding Hyde Park with Colleen Gillis, James Brothers, other applicant representative, and Commissioner Combs. On July twelfth, I had a Zoom meeting regarding Ashby Ponds with Erin Swahalman and Matt Leslie. On July twelfth, I had a Zoom meeting with the Dulles High, regarding the Dulles High Point application with Emma Royce and Mark Looney. On July fourteenth, I had a call with Colleen Gillis regarding One Loudoun and the Hyde Park applications.
Thank you, Commissioner Frank. Commissioner Miller.
Thank you. On June fifteenth, I had a meeting with Colleen Gillis and Molly Novatney Peterson regarding Compass Creek. And on thirteen July, I had a meeting with Emma Royce and Amanda Williams from Cooley with Justin Taylor and Wiley Nelson from Edge Core regarding their upcoming application. And on July thirteenth, I had a meeting with Chris Garland, representing Beatty and their interests in a variety of opportunities, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Vance.
No disclosures.
Thank you, Commissioner Vance, Commissioner Barnes. Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. For myself, on Thursday, July eighth, I met with Emma Royce and Mark Looney regarding the Dulles High Point application. On Friday, July eighth, I met with Molly Novatney regarding the Compass Creek application. On Friday, July eighth, I met with Colleen Gillis, Sean Batterton, James Brothers, Douglas Fleet, and David Ramsey regarding applications for Hyde Park. On Friday, July eighth, I met with Abi Pot Wardhan regarding cellular towers in the Dulles and Blue Ridge districts. On Monday, July eleventh, I met with Ed Donahue regarding Mickey Gordon Park Monopole. On Tuesday, July twelfth, I met with Emma Royce regarding Marie's Road Data Center. On Wednesday, July thirteenth, I met with former Planning Commission Chair Cliff Kiers regarding the Hyde Park application. And that concludes my disclosures. And Jane, yes. I'm sorry, Commissioner Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. No problem at all. Sorry for the delay. On Tuesday, July twelfth, I had a virtual meeting with Colleen Gillis from Cooley regarding Hyde Park. Also in the meeting were James Brothers, Bill Yunda, John, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing his last name, and David Ramsey. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The first application for this evening will be ZMAP two thousand and twenty-one dash zero 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 six, special exception, two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero two two, ZMOD two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero two zero, ZMOD two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero two three, and ZMOD two thousand and twenty-one dash zero zero two one Hyde Bryce? Anyone?
So good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bryce Johnson. I'm the county project manager for the Hyde Park applications. As a reminder, the property subject to these applications is highlighted in yellow on the screen with north oriented to the top of the vicinity map. It is located south of Dulles Greenway in the northeast corner of Belmont Ridge Road and Broadlands Boulevard. This is located in the suburban mixed-use place type. Similar to last time, for the public hearing, the applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment or a ZMAP, a special exception, and three zoning modifications. Ultimately, what the applicant proposes to do is rezone the property, approximately fifty-eight acres, to the R sixteen ADU zoning district to permit up to seven hundred and ninety-two dwelling units. That is a decrease of three units since the public hearing. This would include a mixture of townhomes stacked multifamily, those would be like two over twos or two over ones, and attached multifamily, those would be the like standard apartment or condo buildings. Since the public hearing, the applicant has made a number of revisions that are detailed in the staff report. I won't go into too, too much detail with them right now. I did want to highlight two of the conversation topics that came up at the public hearing. First, there was some discussion about the school attendance and where the students from this property or this development would attend. I can confirm again that the information provided by Loudoun County Public Schools remains accurate. These students would attend schools to the north in the Ashburn Planning District. We do acknowledge that the students who live to the south in the Broadlands would attend different schools at this time. Additionally, there is discussion about the concept of affordable by design. Again, I want to just emphasize that the two thousand and nineteen general plan does have some substantial affordability policies. However, those policies do specifically call out trying to address housing needs for households earning under one hundred percent area median income. So a smaller unit that some might call affordable by design can be cheaper, but it's not necessarily affordable for these households. So just to clarify that in terms of policy versus the affordable by design. For the rest of the presentation, I want to highlight the issues that staff continues to identify as being inconsistent with county policy. Like I mentioned earlier, the applicant is proposing to develop under the suburban compact neighborhood place type rather than the mixed-use place type which is designated. The two thousand and nineteen general plan allows for this if seven criteria are met. There's criteria basically assessing locations for in the mixed-use place type where there's already a mix of uses and the desired mixed-use environment is already existing. The first of these criteria is to address unmet housing needs. Specifically, the county policy anticipates this is done by fifteen percent of the single-family attached units being affordable and ten percent of the multifamily units being affordable. The applicant is definitely providing the affordable multifamily units. However, they're not providing the recommended mix of affordable units for the attached units. Again, I just want to emphasize that that policy does recommend a higher percentage for the attached units. Those are a higher need in the county. So again, staff would just recommend that the applicant meet this policy. Additionally, the applicant is not fully meeting the criterion for proximity transit. The two thousand and nineteen general plan does specify the property is located next to existing transit that could be bus or metro. We do acknowledge that there's planned transit to serve the property that will, is planned to open once metro is, the metro extension is operational. The applicant is also committing to two bus shelter easements. Since the public hearing, they're now committing to two concrete pads, those would be ADA accessible pads, and contributions for the bus shelters. So we do consider this partially met. However, again, the policy does specify existing transit. Next is the criterion for being proximate to a complementary mix of uses. Again, looking at where within the mixed-use place type it's appropriate to consider a compact neighborhood. In this case, staff doesn't find there to be a complementary mix of uses within a half mile. There's residential to the south and west, and there's an office and restaurant to the east. We wouldn't consider that to be the complementary mix we're looking for, a true mixed-use environment with supportive retail. And finally, there's the innovation and design criterion. Staff does find that this is partially met. The applicant is proposing some degree of the two-over-one units, which would be called tri-pack units. Those are new to the county. We would consider that innovative. It definitely allows for the option of higher density without the perception of it being a higher density. They do look similar to single-family homes. However, the proffers are really just allowing that as an option at this time. They do define what a tri-pack is, but they're not actually committing to a set number of tri-pack units. So as proffered, it just remains an option, and we would recommend that something be committed to really provide that innovative design. Again, staff highlights the environmental impacts with this. We had identified this at the public hearing, and the applicant has worked with staff to incorporate some additional environmental commitments highlighted on the screen. That's additional tree plantings, pollinator plantings, the option for garden or reforestation and two of the land bays instead of just grassy areas. So that, that total square footage that was previously designated for just grass, there's a bit of flexibility in that, that would still be environmentally friendly. However, staff does continue to highlight, we will always highlight, that this is a substantially forested area at this time. The tree conservation area that they're proposing is approximately one to one point five percent of the forested area, and there are on-site wetlands. What they're proffering does not really do enough to mitigate the impacts to those existing environmental resources. We do appreciate that they're continuing to do what they can with the existing layout and their proposed design. However, again, staff looks at that and sees that if you were to accommodate it, whether a different layout, less units, or a different, I know the part is the concern about their grading plan, a different grading plan, they could accommodate a wider or a larger tree conservation area to protect the existing environmental resources. Next up, I want to highlight a concern about the housing affordability. So I'd highlighted this at the public hearing, that the applicant is proffering to minimum sizes for the affordable dwelling units. That is great. Staff does like to see that. However, one of the concerns we had at that time and have today is that the zoning ordinance does call for these ADUs to be of comparable size and width to market rate units. And when the applicant adds an additional size restriction in the form of averages that could include both market rate and affordable units, staff becomes concerned that those averages would actually allow for significantly larger market rate units when the affordable units are included at those minimum sizes. So again, staff would just recommend we, to be consistent with county policy and regulations, that we do ensure that the affordable units are of comparable size. Next up is the fiscal impacts. This is similar to at the public hearing. The applicant is proposing an off-site pedestrian bridge over the Dulles Greenway. The, this is great in concept, it's a missing link. However, there is a, an at least a ten million dollar credit to that associated with it. This is, even though it is a missing link in the county, it is not an identified need at this time. Staff cannot support a credit against that. Additionally, there's also the concern over whether the applicant is fully addressing the capital facilities and transportation impacts associated with this. I think this is, you've heard this before regarding staff raising the recommendation that they provide the full capital facilities contributions for the unmet housing needs units, and then the transit and regional road contributions for the all affordable units. Again, for the commission's consideration, if those impacts are fully addressed as proffered. Additionally, I would like to remind the commission of the three zoning modifications listed on the screen. Again, staff cannot support these. Staff does not find that they're innovative, they are inconsistent with the plan policy, specifically regarding the compact neighborhood place type, and therefore, staff cannot support them at this time. For those reasons, staff cannot support approval. Therefore, we support a recommendation of denial to the Board of Supervisors. Specifically, the applications do not meet the seven criteria necessary for developing under the suburban compact neighborhood place type, and the proposal does not fully address the environmental, transportation, and capital facilities impacts. I will note that I do have DTCI on the line if you have any questions related to transportation. That I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Bryce. Is there anyone that has questions for staff or the applicant at this point? Commissioner Merrifield.
Bryce, can you just say again the percentage of affordable units being provided by unit type?
So I believe it was six percent for the single-family attached units, and then twenty-seven percent for the multifamily.
And does the, the housing plan or the comprehensive plan call for that, different unit types to have different ranges of affordable units?
So the policy interpretation from the Unmet Housing Needs Strategic Plan calls for fifteen percent for the single-family attached units.
So it does distinguish by unit type?
Yeah, and it specifies ten percent for the multifamily.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Burns.
Thank you. For staff, I got two questions. Why don't we want to send it for the public here? You said so it won't go to, go directly to the work, work session?
We're in work session.
No, I, oh, okay, that, that's okay. I, I, I got that. The second, oh man, this is stuck again. It's locked up.
Can you borrow Rogers?
Huh? No, it's, it's, it's okay, I get it. It's locked up.
Do you want us to hold off, or should we get back to you?
Yeah, 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 you, you continue, I'll come back.
Okay. Other, other questions for staff or the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Frank.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I guess it's a question for the applicant because I think Bryce already weighed in. The, the math used to determine the, we have minimums and maximums unit size being discussed. The math that we are using to determine the average unit size, does that include the affordable units?
So as the proffers are written today, it does. However, Bryce reached out since the staff report was published in tonight and said, can you exclude the affordables and just make those averages for your market rate units? And I told him before the, the meeting tonight, not enough time to change anything. We're, we're happy to make that change, that it's, those averages are just for the market rate units.
Okay, yeah, that clarification would be very helpful, I think, in the proffers. Thank you.
Okay. Do you, do you want to continue your questions, or you're, you're good? Okay. Commissioner Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Side of question, just to make sure that I'm clear on this. So the reduced setbacks, Bryce, the, the, there's nothing constraining the site that, that requires the setbacks to be reduced from the roads, right?
No.
Okay, so it's just, it's just a choice by the, by the applicant.
At this time, as far as I'm aware, yes.
And then the other thing, I know we had a conversation with the folks from Natural Resources team, I know they're, they're not here tonight or.
Correct, yeah.
Of course, I have a lot of items that I'm interested in on the, the natural resources and the environmental, and I know we talked about if there are opportunities to expand the tree conservation area, and again, there, you, you, is your understanding from the Natural Resources team that there's nothing that's constraining the applicant from expanding the tree conservation areas, just a choice in terms of?
Correct, a, a choice with the layout that's proposed right now.
Right, with the layout and what they're designing. And then the other thing that we talked about was opportunities to better protect the natural resources on this site, including the, the tree conservation area, the wetlands, and some of the other natural resources, and talked about opportunities for being more specific on the LID applications that, that would go into this, and, and, you know, potentially things like urban bioretention pond and linear rain gardens that could cross into the open spaces, you know, expanding the, the tree conservation area, and doing some, some things like that. And, and, I mean, is your feeling that, that those things are possible to do, but it's just, it just would be something that would have to require sort of redesigning the layout or relooking at it? There's no site constraints?
As far as specific LIDs, we would love to hear that or see that at this time. They could also propose locations for those LIDs. I know staff would also want to clarify that the store, the wet pond in the southeast corner of the property, we do recommend the applicant clarify that that's not counting as one of the LIDs, so that way it's the wet pond and three additional LIDs. But that, we would love to see if there is a commitment for a specific location or types. We do know that sometimes it's restraint, there are site constraints that they deal with at site plan, but at this time, I, I think there, that is a real. with at site plan, but at this time, I, I think there, that is a real possibility to at least consider which ones they want to do, and they could even incorporate that, like you said, into the open space, into some other street, streetscape designs. So that, that is something we would love.
Something that would kind of, the, the staff might view those things as innovative if, if they were planned.
If, if they were to go way above and beyond, yeah. We, we can assess it that way.
And we're looking for something innovative in a design that, that may be, you know, I know we always look at things like design and placement, but maybe what we should really should start looking at is ways to do some of this innovative stuff for the, the protection of the enhancement and restoration of the natural resources. So I, I think, I'll just say that, you know, as it stands right now, I don't see these things happening there, but I think there, it, it could, and it, it could be, could be a positive. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirchner. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Combs.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Bryce, I have a couple of questions about the pedestrian, yeah, largely around the pedestrian safety at Education Court and Broadlands Boulevard, including a little west of Education Court. So it looks like in the proffers, we've got, we have commitments to study for traffic signal study early in the project, and then midstream for a traffic signal at Education Court, which if the, if the intersection is to be improved with a signal, it likely will include two crosswalks, I'm guessing. And then we've got a study for additional crosswalks, sort of mid-block at Broadlands. Now, the nature of those crossings at Broadlands are going to be dependent on what the road looks like there. So, for example, there could be a pedestrian refuge if there's a road diet, or some sort of elevated crosswalk, or, or something like that. And I know we've addressed elevated crosswalks before, of course, subject to VDOT approval, and we did it at Belmont Executive initially, and I know that was teased out further as the application went on. Do you have, and maybe since DTCI is here, do you have any sense of ultimately what that improved crosswalk looked like mid-block at Belmont Executive that crossed over Russell Branch over to the retail plaza?
Are you asking specifically for the one at Belmont?
I, I don't think we have that. I, we, I don't think we ever followed up with the applicant to see if they provided that justification study at this time. I don't know where they are in the process, but what they would have had to have done, they would have had to submit that study with those extra enhanced details to VDOT. But no, we don't, we don't have that on file.
Do we have any sense of, because as I look at the proffers, if that, if that mid-block crosswalk is not to be justified, and it's not going to be built, there's going to be a payment in lieu, and that, that payment in lieu is, I don't have the number in front of me, but it's roughly $18,000, which...
I don't think that would cover, that would cover striping probably, but not with the, the enhancements for the enhanced crosswalk, the signalized crosswalks. $18,000 probably wouldn't cover that.
Yeah, and so do we have, I'm, I'm sure we've got a sense somewhere of what those enhancements might cost or an approximation. I'm just wondering if that's ever been teased out.
I know that we looked at that with the Belmont Executive Plaza application, but we never came to a final number.
Okay.
I, I do know that the Belmont Executive Plaza proffers did have a substantially larger contribution for the cash amount. I think it was 248 or something like that, 1,000. So again, that, that would allow for substantial improvements beyond just the striping. That could be the, a signalized crosswalk or the pedestrian refuge. That would allow some options to be looked at.
And so if, for example, if, if at Education Court, if the traffic, I'm sorry, if the signal studies ultimately come back and there is not going to be a traffic signal there, then we perhaps are going to want more substantial safety mechanisms in place, particularly mid-block. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. I think, one concern that I had, I guess, let me start with the, when we talk about innovative design, you had said that they've, they've provided some tri-pack units, and those would be considered innovative. We're just not sure how many they're going to give, so I get, I get that, and that's a legitimate answer. But is there, is there a number? Does it need to be 1% of the application needs to have some sort of innovative building in this case, or is it just they need to have something? Is there, is there a number that staff is looking for? Is there 10% innovative, and the rest can be townhomes? Do, is there any sort of parameters that you can kind of give us to determine what staff thinks is innovative?
So I think that's something we would definitely be willing to discuss. I will note that with the most recent proffers, they increased the number of the multifamily stacked units that would be subject to that average. And that came when they also revised to include a definition for tri-pack, so those 60 additional units. So I mean, I think for a starting point, it looks like they're considering 60 tri-pack units. So I mean, that would be something to consider as far as reaching for something to guarantee that, yeah, we are getting these units.
Okay. And so I'm going to ask staff, or sorry, I'm going to ask the applicant to weigh in on that, on that item, and then I have one more after that.
Awesome. So with regard to the tri-pack units, we agree, it's an innovative product, obviously, all the way along since we filed this application over a year ago. It's been a component. It's been one of the product types as one of our seven. It is an untested product type in Loudoun in the region, and with the interest rates doubling in the last three, six months, and we're just, we're just concerned about committing to a product type that is untested and our ability to deliver on that. We're committed to doing it and to, to exploring it. We can't figure out a proffer that says, we're going to explore it, but if it's, if it's not a product type that's going to be viable here, what then? What, what then? And so that's why we appreciate the desire for innovative, for that commitment to the tri-packs. Where we think that we are innovative are in the larger areas of open space, in the, in the single-family attached product along Broadlands Boulevard that looks like, looks like a detached product. We think it's innovative in other ways, and we're talking a lot about the tri-packs. We're committed to exploring it. We just can't make a commitment to, yes, we will deliver this many on, on the property here.
So when you say it's untested, I, I get that. I'm not a developer. I'm a computer guy. So how do you test it? Do you do market research? Do you use studies, or do you build five and see how fast they sell? Like, what's the strategy behind that?
It, it, there's market testing. There's, there's a whole lot of people who are adept at that, who get together and start to figure out where the trends are. What other products are selling? Why are we not selling certain products? Is it because people are saying, you know what I'd really like? I really need this sort of a product. And does that scratch the itch? Does that, it's, it's, does another project go forward, and are they wildly successful? Then that gives us obviously a really good marker as to whether or not they would be successful here. But, but where we are right now, and obviously, not knowing what's happening with regard to inflation and interest rates, and not being ready to necessarily deliver these for at least two years on the property, it's hard to say at this point that we feel confident that a certain number of these would be tri-packs at the end of the day. So I, I don't want to be, I want to be very clear. We're not saying that they won't be. We're, we, we had a conversation earlier this week, as you, or last week with, as you heard, with Commissioner Combs and Commissioner Frank. We like the product. We just, we just feel that if we commit to it in two years and it's not there, we're back in front of you or your colleagues in two years having a conversation because a significant swath of our program, it doesn't, doesn't exist, is, is not appropriate at that time.
So there's, there's no number above zero that you can commit to at this point?
Not, not at this point, not at this point.
A half of a tri-pack, you can't do that.
One and a half. We're doing one and a half tri-packs.
Can I ask a related question to the tri-pack question?
Yes, you may, please.
Staff, would a change in unit type three years down the road be one of those concept plan amendments that would not necessarily require a public hearing?
So they don't specify where the stacked units are on the CDP. They have the illustrative, but they're not proffering to the illustrative. So I mean, they, there's a couple instances in the proffers where they would, it'd probably be more than one text amendment, but if the proffers were written in a way that limited the amount that would need to be changed.
If we're not changing the number of units, and not necessarily changing the location of the units...
Yeah, if there's just like one line saying, X number of the multifamily stacked units shall be tri-pack, yeah, I could see that. I can't guarantee that, obviously. That's a board decision to vote for that.
Understood, but that would be an expedited change if it was necessary and the market changed on you or didn't support it.
I think, I, I think we'd be willing to have a conversation with proffer management or the county attorney's office between now and the board of supervisors' public hearing about what kind of flexibility could be afforded. If you understand that we're, we're committed to it, but if we need to change it, we don't want to be in a year-long process to change that out, we're happy to have that conversation.
Well, I'd like to investigate that as far as possible and come back with a number. If, if that's an avenue, come back with a number.
Yeah, you're welcome. Not ready for you. I still have one more question. We've talked about parking probably ad nauseam on this application. When you talk about a large number of units, the thing that sticks out to me is, as long, unless they're all single-family detached units, parking has always been a concern. One of the things that I, I really appreciate from the applicant is the bottom, the southwest corner. You guys did make some changes over there. I'm aware of that, and I think those are very positive changes, and then for that area, I think it's, it's going to be sufficient. Where I still have a little bit of concern, though, is related specifically to the area near the clubhouse. And we've had this discussion before, it's not new. I think the concern, though, is, is because of, thank you, because of the potential for very high use by the entire Broadlands community, which is over 3,000 units. This is a great amenity. It's beautiful. It looks great. And I like the, I forget what they call it, the infinity edge on the pool. I'd like to go, but I think the concern is with such an amenity, that's more of a, I'll call it a regional HOA amenity rather than a neighborhood HOA amenity. And as a neighborhood HOA amenity, there's no problem, because most of the people will be in the neighborhood, they would mostly walk. In this case, I don't think that's going to be the case, and I think you're going to get a much higher percentage of people that are going to drive from other areas of the Broadlands community to this facility, just like these residents can go other places in Broadlands and use those facilities as well. When I see that happening, I just don't see enough parking. Would you be willing to accommodate that in some manner? And I have a couple of ideas. There's a, there's a strip of townhomes directly northwest of that, and frankly, taking out that strip of townhomes and adding parking there, I think would make it a, a kind of a, a no-brainer to kind of meet what my vision of how many parking spaces you would need near these facilities would be. But I'm open to other out-of-the-box thinking when it comes to this. You know, my out-of-the-box thinking includes parking on top of buildings, but anything that's, Bill thinks from an engineering perspective is reasonable, I'd be happy to listen. So just wanted to get your take on that and see what your thoughts are.
So a, a conversation that we had last week with Commissioner Frank and Commissioner Combs had to do with the parking in this area, and they asked us to explore the possibility of creating some diagonal parking, head-in parking along that entrance road that you can see on the exhibit that's on the screen, the blad, the, the road that starts off of Education Court with that double-ended arrow. So that street there, just past the community center and near the multifamily block. And I'm going to turn it over to Bill Junda to speak to that, that exercise, so that he can speak to what we explored and the results of that, and then we can talk a little bit more about some other changes we're, we're making, we're prepared to make.
Thanks. So I'm Bill Junda with Gordon, civil engineer. So we did look at this scenario for putting head-in or angled parking on that road. Unfortunately, the Loudoun County FSM does not allow head-in or diagonal parking on roads where the vehicle trips are over 700 vehicles per day, 750 vehicles per day, and that entire road exceeds that threshold. So it would preclude the, the ability to do that.
So what else you got?
So if, Bryce, if you wouldn't mind, if you wouldn't mind pulling up slide, slide 17 of our presentation. One other thing that we discussed with Commissioner Frank and Commissioner Combs was the possibility of, of, despite the, the love for the tri-pack product, could we convert those tri-packs that are circled in yellow there to two-over-twos with driveways, thereby reducing any impact on any of that surrounding unallocated parking that's near to the, the community center. And so what we're prepared to do is reduce, is to, to change those to two-over-twos, which would reduce our total unit count by 13 units, but retain all the existing parking spaces, thereby, we think, reducing any sort of need for folks to use the, the parking that is near the, the community center for any of that, the, the daily needs of those units. In terms of losing those parking, losing those units, it goes, it goes without saying. I know we've had conversations with a number of you about the, the buy-right option here. Once we start to significantly degrade the, the productivity of this, the buy-right option just becomes financially more viable and more attainable. And so as we're trying to make this work, as we're trying to make something work here, we're having, having a hard time looking at those units and, and further devaluing the, the project by the loss of those units by, to add parking there. There is a significant amount of parking. We understand that at this scale, at this level, it's very difficult to see it. It just looks like streets. But I know that in working with a number of you in PowerPoints, we've zoomed in on various, various areas, identified where you can't necessarily see it with this exhibit. There's a lot of parallel parking. There's a lot of head-in parking adjacent to that open space area in the center of the, the block. Thank you so much. Yes, a lot of, a lot of head-in parking there on the south side of that street that was just highlighted with the, the laser pointer. There's a lot of parallel parking that's there as well. And so we do appreciate, we, we've worked extensively with the, the HOA subcommittee on parking, on increasing the parking. We've continued to add parking as we've gone along. There's been parking that's added, it's been added in the southwest corner since, since the planning commission public hearing. So, but, but we do feel like we're at a point now where adding additional parking starts to become dilutive to, to the overall project here, and becomes difficult to, to continue to, to go forward with this.
So if we convert those to two-over-twos, can, maybe Mark knows the answer with his laser pointer, can you tell me where the parking would be added to the, to the project if we were to? So it's around those, those, but is it, is it in front of it? Is it behind it? Or are you expecting them to park closer to the community building instead? Like, so you're going to, if we, if we switch those over to two-over-twos, reduce the 13, reduce 13 units, that'll give us 13-plus unit, parking spaces, I think it's one...
Right. Those 13 units that we would be eliminating by converting these, these allocated tri-packs to two-over-twos were units that did not have an integral garage in the first place. So those 13 units would be expected to use one to two on-street parking spaces elsewhere. So by eliminating those in that area, and we went really, like, I, I would like to say stick by stick, block by block, throughout all of these, to identify where there was a, there was a need to kind of reduce on-street parking demand. And I think that that is, our team thinks as well, that that is the area that creates the most benefit by, by eliminating the, the demand on on-street parking.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioner Frank?
I think you covered, actually, most of where I was going to go. But just to clarify something that you said, Colleen, the, so by swapping these unit types out, we're still, trying to think of how I want to put this, that's still something you guys can, can manage and, and move forward. It's by actually removing, say, the red stick close to the pond...
Right.
Or the salmon stick just north of the purple pool building.
Yes.
Those are the things that...
Yes.
You guys, okay, feel that are, are going to be more detrimental. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the big distinguish, when we were talking last week about it, was you have, those 13 units, they don't have a driveway spot. So they're guaranteed 100% one or two cars are going to be on the street every single day. And so where we already had that area close to the community center where we were concerned about the crowding, we also have the most density and the least street parking of the three or four sides of where those tri-packs are. So it was kind of the two issues on top of each other that landed us in that general area, saying, how do we fix this right there? Because obviously, if you're up near the, the farthest north end, you've got a lot of street parking. The farthest west end, you've got more street parking. The far east side, you've got a bunch of street parking on the other side of that building. Those people there in the middle where the yellow circle ended up were, I think, our biggest concern as far as, and it overlaps there, the community building. So I think that's how we got there. I don't know if this is the perfect answer, but, yeah, we, we were trying to, we're trying to fix that problem and the overlap between those two parking concerns, and so that, that's kind of how we ended up there. But yeah, those 13... But yeah, those 13, the tri-packs are innovative, and I, I, it'd be great to see if they work. But they, they bring their own, even more so than our normal two-over-two parking conversations, they bring their own challenge with parking. So that's, that was a big concern. Okay. I, I don't know, I guess not. You confirmed that that's, that's okay as, as it's presented there, but, okay. Now, that does, that does reduce the ability to guarantee numbers on tri-packs, though, right?
Right.
If we push one, it pulls the other.
Right, right. And, and, and I will say, you know, this is, this is, as Bryce has said, this is an illustrative, right? And, and, but, but we are looking at this and saying, let's, let's make those two-over-twos to reduce the, to reduce the impact on parking. And it is that balloon that you squeeze one side and something else happens. But I do think that as we've done this iterative process with you and your colleagues, that every time that we've done this, we've, we've made it a better plan. We've made it a, a, a better plan that has less risk for, for creating those sorts of concerns that you guys are, have your eye on. One other thing I just think is important to note here, just overall on the plan, this is the, you know, we do have additional parking commitments throughout the, throughout the proffers and the CDP to commit to additional guarantees on parking in terms of increased minimums, increased off-lot minimum parking spaces that increase it over and above what the ordinance requires. All of that together creates a project that is, that has a higher parking rate than any other approved project in Loudoun, and to my knowledge, any other pending project in Loudoun. So it is a, it is a project that has a lot more parking. So we do hope that when it's constructed and built out, that we won't be facing the same concerns or facing the same issues that I know that you all hear a lot about today.
Great. Thank you. Ms., Commissioner Miller.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the parking issue. I, too, am a huge advocate for off-site parking. I always push for one off-site parking space per unit because of overflow. That's my biggest concern, is always overflow. Not necessarily the people that live there, but the six, I mentioned, the 16-year-old that becomes, the elderly, getting drive, get your job, stuff like that, friends come over to visit, realtors come and show houses. That's why we do that. At .8, it's pretty darn good. The value of that, though, is that I look at it and say, well, we really don't have a parking issue because of the community center, because the whole point of having .8 off-site units for space is that we have all of this parking for people to come when they come on off-hours. Additionally, this great infinity pool will only have traffic from May, from the last Sunday in May until the first Monday in September. So it's, I, I don't want to see necessarily units go away just to accommodate potentially some overflow parking, which already exists for three months of the year. So if, it's a, so I, that's just, as, since we're in the work session vernacular, I just wanted to bring that up, that I am comfortable with the way the parking is situated around the clubhouse and the pool. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Combs, do you have your second and final question of the night?
Well, how about opportunity? Second and final opportunity, because I have multiple questions. First, firstly, Bryce, you mentioned with schools that the districting is confirmed to be, these would be districted for the schools north in Ashburn. Do we have any understanding from LCPS whether that district is, that district line is likely to move? And if so, if the districting then would put these folks into the Broadland schools, what that would look like? I thought you gave us data on that at public hearing, but I can't seem to locate it.
So redistricting is ultimately going to be up to the school board. They do consider that on a periodic basis, and they do hold, I believe it's at least one public hearing, so there's an opportunity for people to voice their concerns about where their kids go to school. When there's new developments such as this, there is an administrative process where if the superintendent identifies a critical need of saying, you know what, that these kids really need to go somewhere else, there is a process. There's still a public process for that, though. And I, again, I can't speak for where that would go, where the kids would go. I just can note that the school district, the school attendance zone located to the south, their schools do have greater capacity right now. Or rather, they, the, they can accommodate more students than the schools to the north.
Got it.
So like, again, I'm not saying that's what would happen, but there's some flexibility built into there for the school system to accommodate additional students.
Okay. Thank you. Colleen, a couple of questions for you all. I had been asking earlier about pedestrian safety improvements, traffic calming measures, things of that sort at Broadlands. Where, there had been discussion about a road diet before. Where, where are we on that?
Great, yeah.
I can't recall where we left that dialogue.
So, so your colleagues can see it. If you can pull up, I think it's the next slide, slide 18 is the road diet exhibit? Yeah, great. So after the planning commission public hearing, our traffic engineer thought, he heard the concerns from the community about, about crossing Broadlands Boulevard and heard the concerns and said, yeah, is there a way that we can make this safer? So he prepared this exhibit to demonstrate how this section of Broadlands Boulevard could be narrowed along the frontage between, between Education Court and Glebe View Drive. This exhibit, we shared it with DTCI and VDOT. Took a while for everybody's calendars and vacations to get aligned, but we had a meeting this past Friday and had a conversation, and it merited further investigation. Nobody, nobody said, heck no, it's not going to happen. This is a terrible idea. And so what we're committed to, Bryce was on the call as well, what we're committed to is to continue to explore this as a possibility. We, we understand the concerns here. Doing a road diet like this, and for those of you that go, I don't really understand what this all means, if you've ever driven along Hay Road in front of Stonebridge High School just west of Claiborne Parkway, this is, that's an example of what happens. It, it goes from a four-lane undivided section into a, into a narrowed neck-down intersection right in front of the, the school, and it just slows traffic down naturally. And so, you know, we're looking at doing this as one of our improvements with this project, but we still need to do a little bit more investigation with VDOT and DTCI. And Bryce, if I've said anything misrepresented staff's willingness to continue to explore this, please correct me, but I, I thought it was positive.
Yeah, we're open to continuing to explore that. I will say, I think something that came out of that conversation was that DTCI and VDOT had said that they'd be supportive, if, if there was support for that, for it could be lumped into the crosswalk study.
Yep.
So part of the consideration of the crosswalk study, they could say, okay, is a crosswalk justified if these are the conditions?
Right.
So that, that was part of the conversation that did happen.
So Bryce, that's a great question, and Eric's probably going to cover it, but is $18,000 enough to do anything other than stripe stuff? If, if there's a discussion that says we need to move farther along, it doesn't seem like there'd really be enough money for that to happen.
Yeah, that would definitely not be enough money.
We, we understand that we have not priced that out, and it was not, this, this improvement, we know, is more than $18,000, but we're trying to get our arms around it for the proffers.
Is there a note, is there, and I, I don't, I don't know what Commissioner Combs is going to look for, but is there, is there a higher number that we could throw out as a, again, because we don't know, I'm not going to suggest that you, I think Bryce said the last one was $250,000. That seems awful high, but I think 18 is pretty clearly going to be way, way, way too low. Is there some token amount that we can increase at, at some point?
At some point?
Yeah, at some point. We'd love to do more investigation. If it makes you feel better to put a blank in there as opposed to 18,000, we're happy to put a blank in there. We just, this is obviously a moving target in terms of scope, so it feels a little bit like we can't necessarily identify. The 18,000 was a result, a holdover from the crosswalks. We understand that with this, it will become more, and even if this doesn't happen, we're happy to have conversations about increasing that to, to more accurately represent what it would cost.
And thank you for that, Vice Chair Salmond. So in the event that, and I appreciate the commitment to study the, the road diet, the pedestrian refuge, whatever that might ultimately look like, or ultimately, if it doesn't look like any improvement there, it, would you commit to then funding whatever is appropriate to build a sufficient pedestrian crossing in the event we don't ultimately get to that condition?
Yes.
Whatever that might be. We've heard from Bryce, it's a, it's a pretty high number. It's certainly more than the 18.
Right. And we're happy to, we're happy to figure out what that, do more investigation.
Okay.
To figure out what that number is. We'll probably want some number, so it's not a complete blank check, but yeah, but we understand the.
Some number that.
North of 18.
You and staff can agree on.
Yep.
My concern is we don't get an improvement like that, and then we're left with striping to play Frogger across Broadlands, which.
Understood.
Nobody wants. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. I've got one final topic to address in the form of a question. Perhaps there's other folks who want to weigh in here. We haven't really discussed much, much the pedestrian bridge. And I see it's in here with the, the credit sought for the full construction price.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sensing there isn't a lot of appetite for that at our commission. I know we haven't heard much from the other commissioners on it. Is there flexibility on your seek there with the, the credit you're looking for on that?
So if, if we're really waiting for some direction, I think ultimately from the district supervisor and the Broadrun district supervisor as to their preference on, on whether or not this bridge, there is some, some, there's, there's lack of, there's, there's an absence of this is exactly what we want, when we want it, and how much we want. So we're waiting for that direction. In terms of, in terms of, in terms of that proffer, let me say one thing. One, we talk about the, the amount of the credit. That is a, that is our best estimate today as to what this bridge would cost. It was not, it's not a highly engineered estimate. We haven't gone out and figured out exactly what's necessary to build that, and so there is a lot of contingency in that number. We, we hope that it will be less. I say that, and somebody's probably kicking me under the table going, but inflation, but, but interest rates, who knows what's going to happen there? In terms of, in terms of the construction of that, given that uncertainty, I know that plays into whether or not the district supervisors are also interested in this being constructed. But because of that, we're asking not for credit for costs that we don't spend. We're not asking for a number. We're setting it high and hoping we come in less, which is sometimes how projects are proffered in the county. We're not doing that. We're, it's a dollar-for-dollar credit because we, we believe it's a regional improvement. What, what my recommendation is, hopefully with the commission's blessing on it, is there are ongoing conversations with the district supervisors, and they've asked for some time to figure this out. And we'd like to at least leave the proffer in as it is, as a placeholder, understanding that if we can't get to, if we can't get to resolution on that topic with the district supervisors, we know we've, we've sealed our fate at the board level for sure. But, but given that we're, we're waiting for direction and we're, we're agnostic, if it's the direction of the board to pull it out, of course, we're going to pull it out. If it's the direction of the board to keep it in and not to get credit, then that's going to be a conversation at the board level. But we understand that's ultimately a decision for them to make, and we'd be happy to just leave it here, understanding that we're going to continue to have those conversations.
Okay.
So just a clarification, the way the, and this is probably a question for Bryce, the way the proffers are written today, if this pedestrian bridge is not built and they don't get credit because there's no pedestrian bridge, are they proffering the full proffer package, capital facility, regional road transportation, et cetera, for all market-rate units today? Is that in the proffer?
Yeah, those are still in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll let you continue.
I may have a, just a question in, in how we style something. So it, am I characterizing it correctly to say that the, the pedestrian bridge is something, an option you want to keep on the table as it moves forward? But in terms of, of addressing the nature or the extent of the, the, the credit sought right now, it's just not ripe?
Yes, I, I would, I would say the whole discussion about the bridge is, is not, not yet ripe, because ultimately, we'd love the direction from the, from the district supervisors, Broadrun and Ashburn, to tell us their direction on whether to keep it in or to take it out. And because of that, that decision, then we're going to have a conversation about, you know, if, if it's kept in, we'd like to have the conversation with them about credits as opposed to getting the cart before the horse at this point, having a conversation about credits.
Okay. Bryce or Jackie, what's, what might be the best way to handle that as we move this application along?
So it's, it's part of the application.
It's in the proffer right now?
Yeah, it's part of the application. So if you recommend approval and say nothing about the credit and the off-site bridge, you're recommending approval of that included in the proffers. I will say, I have did some experimenting early, the past few days with Marchand, trying to figure out, is there a way to toy it out? I mean, not very cleanly.
Okay.
The best way to do it would be to include it in the motion, saying whether you direct them to take it out or leave it in. And you could also, if you just want something informal, you could do a straw poll just for a gauge of interest among the commission as to feelings about it, and then leave it in. But if you do that, you need to understand that a recommendation is with that bridge.
Okay, I, I guess, Mr. Vice Chair, I guess I'm curious as to where others, or how others at this day is feel about, right now, the nature of that, as it's reflected in the proffers, is we will build the pedestrian bridge and then get a, a credit for the amount spent. Where, what are folks thinking on that?
I'd like to ask for just brief comment, and, you know, yes or no, a little bit more than yes or no is okay, but I'll start with Commissioner Merrithew. Okay. Commissioner Kirchner. Your pass?
No.
Okay, then I'll just start, and I'll say, I think that at this point, the pedestrian bridge is something that would be a nice-to-have. At a $10 million hit to the capital facilities, which removes money for capital facilities for anything else in the area, is probably not a good deal for the county, and I would be inclined to remove this and allow the board to put it back in should they be interested in doing that. So that's my view. Commissioner Frank.
Ditto. I'm, I agree. I think it's a matter of prioritization, as nice as the bridge is and as wonderful as it would be to have it built. I have concerns that we're going to need those cap facilities funds for things like schools and the impact this project has on that. So I, I would also prefer that it be removed at this point.
So not only am I in favor of keeping the bridge in, I think I may brought it up at the public hearing, that it might have been useful if they just widened the whole bridge, not just with a pedestrian overpass. Question for Bryce on this, though, is this not the last, this section that was kind of squished down to two lanes, four lanes, undivided over the bridge? Is it not the last section on Belmont Ridge Road between 7 and 50 that's not accounted for yet?
Do you mean in terms of there being pedestrian accommodations?
Being, it's a being fully widened, fully finished road.
I'll defer to DTCI if Lou were to ask.
And the reason I would ask that question is because would that not be a regional need then?
Lou, are you there?
Is there someone from DTCI on the, on the phone?
I see him. Let me.
Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, okay. That is, the road has been restriped to four lanes just over the past few years. There is no median there. A median would require a wider bridge section to be constructed, but there are no current plans to do that. The kind of a transportation plan does call for this to be a divided road. So in that sense, it's not built to its ultimate condition, but only in that, only without the, the raised median. That's all that's missing.
Right. So, so I guess my question is, if, if the, if the applicant came in and said, hey, we'll, we'll widen the whole bridge, would that now then be a useful regional road improvement?
I, I, I think a bike-peg connection would be helpful. We do have the four travel lanes and all the required turn lanes that are present, so adding capacity to the road, not so much, but, but the bike-peg is another missing link there. Again, we acknowledge that that's a, a significant missing link, and that's why it's being discussed here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vance.
Yeah, I do agree. I think it would be a good thing to have, but I think, given the magnitude of it and the uncertainties around it, and the fact that it could be put back in by the supervisor, I, I would, I would prefer to see it pulled out.
Okay, so you're a no. And Commissioner Barnes?
They can put a boat up there, and they can just cross, you know, pedestrian. Put a boat.
So the answer is you want it removed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just put a boat there.
Okay, and we'll go back to Commissioner Merrithew.
I liked your argument.
I liked your argument about pulling it out, and if, because that, that would put us in a position of being closer to plan policy, county policy.
Yes.
So I would prefer to go forward to the board, adhering to plan and county policy, and let the board make the decision on whether they need to make that change.
Very well. And Commissioner Kirchner?
I'd be fine with it coming out, but I just wanted to sort of add that I think there's a lot of other issues here that we need to be addressing before we move on, thinking that this, this kind of, this sort of resolves all the issues here.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Combs, I think you have your answer. I counted eight to one on taking it out. So, logistically, Bryce, how do we do that in a motion? Should we decide to have a motion at all?
So if you're, if you're motioning to recommend approval, and you guys sound inclined to recommend the bridge be removed, then I would recommend the motion basically states "subject to revisions to include removal of the offsite bicycle and pedestrian facilities." That's the way it's labeled in the proffers. And the credit.
And we're, and given the direction of the planning commission, we're, we're happy to remove that language, given your direction.
Okay, thank you all.
Very well. Are there any other comments or questions? Mr. Merrithew, round-
I want to ask a question on the tree conservation. Did staff and the applicant have discussions about particular areas of the site, or a particular percentage of the site that should be targeted for the conservation?
So, talking with NRT, the best location would be, again, looking at that northeast corner. Talking with the applicant, we do understand that they have a utility easement that runs along where they're proposing a private street. However, they could put tree conservation area on the west side of that street. We understand that there's housing there. They would have to redo the design and the layout, but they could put a tree conservation on that side, and basically have green infrastructure in that northeast corner. It'd be better, they'd do a better job of preserving existing tree coverage, as well as the wetlands and that portion of the property.
Do you happen to know which utility holds that easement?
I believe it was a sewer easement.
Sanitary sewer. Yep, Loudoun Water easement. And, and if you want to, if it's helpful, Slide 43 of our presentation shows that sewer easement and its alignment. Yeah. Yeah, and just to be clear, that that is an existing easement today. It's not something we're proposing with our application. And that was, and you can see, I hope you can see, that there's like kind of a dog-leg shaped alignment there that, that runs north, thank you so much, Bryce, yeah, that runs north-south, and then hangs to the west at the northern property boundary. Yeah, so you can see that's-
Bryce, on that slide, what were you, you were discussing the west side of the, the west side of the most eastern travelway? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, so, right now, there's the AHU building, and that would be, basically, they could put a tree conservation area there. That would require either that building going away, or being located somewhere else. Or just less, again, there could be less units overall.
Of course, it had to be the AHU built.
Yeah, I, I don't like that I just said that, to be honest, but that, that is where it makes sense.
And, and for whatever it's worth, I mean, this is also interrelated with the overall grade of the site. And so if you just slide back to Slide 39, you can see that there's significant grade between the western edge of the property and the eastern edge of the property. So in order to develop the property, there's significant grading that's required. And so, as much as we're looking at this one corner, what we've identified is an area that we can save, but, but the vast majority of the site needs to be, needs significant grading to be developable, and, and that's part of why we're facing these, these challenges and these trade-offs that we are.
Thank you. Any other comment, any other questions? Seeing none, Mr. Combs, this is in your district.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I move that the Planning Commission forward ZMAP 2021 0006, Specs 2021 0022, ZMOD 2021 0020, ZMOD 2021 0023, and ZMOD 2021 0024, Hyde Park, to the Board of Supervisors with a conditional recommendation of approval, subject to the proffer statement dated June 17, 2022, and the conditions of approval dated July 5, 2022, provided as attachments two and three to the July 14, 2022 Planning Commission Work Session Memorandum, and contingent upon the following amendments to the applications. One, consider a commitment to a specific number of TRIPACs. I'm sorry, commit to consideration of a specific number of TRIPACs. Commit to the revised sheet of the CDP that we saw that fixed the parking, so that substituted the two sticks of, of two-over-twos in lieu of the two sticks of TRIPACs. Commit to consideration of a road diet, traffic calming, and pedestrian refuge or refuges in the proffered Broadlands Boulevard Crosswalk Study. Provide a substantially increased cash and lieu contribution for the Broadlands Boulevard Crosswalk, something that is significant multiples of the 18,000 that's currently in there. And remove, although I, I do really love the bridge conceptually, for now, for current purposes, remove the off-stri, offsite pedestrian and bicycle facilities and associated credit. I further move the Planning Commission's conditional recommendation of approval be based on the following findings. At a density of 13.75 dwellings per acre, and inclusive of single-family attached and multifamily units, the proposed residential use is consistent with the Loudoun County 2019 General Plan's recommendations for the suburban compact neighborhood place type under which the applicant proposes to develop. The applications propose a minimum of 15% of the subject property to contain open space amenities, as recommended by the Loudoun County 2019 General Plan, for the suburban compact neighborhood place type under which the applicant proposes to develop. And lastly, the applications propose residential uses which are compatible with the nearby existing and planned office, commercial, and public uses located on the north side of Broadlands Boulevard.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Motion is made by Commissioner Combs, seconded by Commissioner Salmon. Commissioner Combs, do you have an opening?
Yeah, just briefly. I'd like to firstly thank staff and thank the applicant for working this application as much as you all have to bring it forward to us as it is. I know a considerable amount of work has gone into this, and it's reflected in, I think, how nicely the application presents. I am comparing the application as it is presented to the very real by right use that is on site. And I think when we weigh those two, this, this proposed project is much more consistent with the plan and what my understanding is of what the county needs. There's a lot of good here, and I'd like, I'd like for us to, to send it up to the board with a recommendation of approval, so that the board can, can further put finishing touches on, so that the site can develop in a more favorable way than a data center right here, surrounded by all of this residential.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Merrithew?
Can I offer a friendly amendment? The, I understood the conversation to be with the, regarding the bridge was the credit that was being asked for, for the construction of the bridge, not necessarily removing the bridge itself. So I want to leave it in there that the applicant could build the bridge if they wanted, but-
At their cost.
At their cost, and no credit against other proffer commitments.
I'm happy to accept that.
Okay. Then if, if I could, Mr. Vice Chair, I would just say, I'm a little concerned about sending it forward with commitments to consider the TRIPAC and the road diet. I really think the road diet's an important feature. I don't know what the timeline would be to get a decision on either one of those cases, but I hate sending something forward with the only obligation is to consider it. Well, that could be, you know, a five-minute meeting. I, I do agree that fundamentally, I think this proposal is more consistent with the plan than the alternatives by right, by right proposals. So I generally support the proposal. I think there are some loose ends, and I'm sort of hesitating on supporting it with that many loose ends on the way to the board. But overall, I do support the project. I think that road diet is a critical part.
Thank you, Commissioner Merrithew. Other comments? Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. I want to comment on a couple of things relating to this application in the broader sense. This pedestrian bridge, we talk about the seven criteria, and we say, access to a mix of businesses and things of that nature. And then we say, let's not give them access to a mix of businesses and things of that nature. This is a relatively regional project in that it would connect these 800-odd homes to the Goose Creek Village, half-mile away from corner to corner, which provides commerce, it provides opportunity, provides grocery, and self-storage, and there's a church, and there's restaurants, and this fills out the last link in a way. As Lou mentioned, that, that road, they striped the bridge to squeeze in four lanes. It's just a matter of time before someone gets hit by a car trying to get there. When this property gets developed, 800 people, 800 houses trying to walk over there, it's going to happen. The opportunity to have that built now would be tremendous, and I, as I said before, I would even support them building the entire thing and getting a credit for that. We talk about transportation, access to existing transportation as being one of the seven criteria. I would hope that Supervisory Turners, Transportation and Landings Committee would take that up specifically, because, come on, it's obvious that whatever's built here will be built after Metro is open and the bus stops are warranted. To, to say no on the basis of the word "existing" is unfortunate. And to comment on the, the TRIPAC issue and what the future will hold, sometimes we get a little too prescriptive with developers and housing, and even developers of commercial space, in that we want them to do a specific thing today, not knowing what the market will bear in the future. Planning is saying, this is what we want to do, these are the things we want in concept, and the market will help dictate what that is, whether it's the TRIPACs work or they don't, whether a flex industrial building should be here or 100 feet over to the left. The market will help determine that, and putting those types of restrictions on applicants could be deleterious to what their goal is. And this one in specific, I would hope that as we pass this forward, and I would strongly support doing that in any form, because it is better than a data center, it's not as good as a hospital, but it's another, a story for another day. I would hope that the things that we're asking of the developer today, the applicant today, is not so restrictive to them that this application never even sees the board. I would hope that what we are asking them is not that, that difficult for them to, to work with to get to the board, but if it is, then we're going to see a lot of earth moving for some big data centers in a couple of years, and I hope, or a couple of months. I would hope that not to be the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, sir. I agree with Commissioner Merrithew completely. I don't like "consider." Where considering is nothing, you know, it means zero. They can consider, say, I considered, I decided I'm not going to do it. Consider doesn't mean anything to put in a motion to say they will consider it. That doesn't mean anything. Either we want them to do it, or we don't want them to do it. I want a definite language there rather than considering it. Thank you.
Commissioner Kirchner?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I agree with the sentiments about consideration versus request or specifics. But I'm also concerned, I mean, well, let me first say that, I think there is, there are some really great aspects to this application, some improvements that have been made. But I'm concerned that there are some key elements, at least from my standpoint, that I think are very important to the community and the residents who live around here, having to do with having units so close to the street, reducing the setbacks is a big issue for me. I've said it before, I don't like to see us sending forward an approval to put people closer to very busy roads. I just don't think it's the right thing for us to do. And I don't think, in this situation, it's something that has to be done, there's no constraints. The same thing for the protection of the natural resources and the forested areas and wetland areas that are, we've heard over and over again, are very important to the residents, particularly in the eastern part of the county. What I would like to see more work being done, I think there was, is a way to maybe help expand those protections, expand that tree conservation area, and I didn't see that happening tonight. And I think it's important, when the residents here see all of those trees being wiped out, they're going to be pretty upset. And they're going to know that it, that didn't have to be that way. So I wish that we had more time to work on that. I think we could have come up with something that would have worked for the applicant. So unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support it. I'd like to, but I can't. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirchner. Appreciate all the comments, and I think with that, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes six, two, one, with Commissioner Kirchner and Barnes opposed, Commissioner Hayes absent. Thank you very much. Our next application is ZCPA 2021-0002 and ZMOD 2021-00321 Loudoun. Ms. Marsh, I think you're up.
Good evening, Commission. Here to present, One Loudoun. I actually don't have a presentation for the commission tonight. The only update that I have for the commission after the packet went out is staff did receive an email from a representative from the One Loudoun Neighborhood Association in support of the application. I believe the Planning Commission received this as well. We received this sometime today via email. But as the staff report indicates, many of the outstanding issues with the application have been resolved. Staff and the applicant still have one issue that we are not in agreement with. It is the requested credit for the write-in off of Route 7 onto Lexington Drive. As the staff report indicates, the applicant is continuing to seek a 25% credit request for this. Staff does not support this. We did not support this at the time of the Planning Commission public hearing. With that, I do have DTCI available for any follow-up questions. Happy to answer any other questions on this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on this application?
If I can.
Hold, please. Mr. Merrithew, do you have any questions?
I, I was looking at the traffic impact analysis, and it appears the traffic split is more like 84% towards One Loudoun and 15% or 16% the other way. Am I reading the traffic analysis correct? This would be a build-out. I think it's at both 2035 and 2040.
I'm going to defer to Lou to answer that, please. Lou, if you're available?
Lou, you might be on mute. We see your name, so we know you're there.
I'm trying, I'm trying to find the button. Sorry. Couldn't get the mouse there. Yes, Mr. Commissioner Merrithew and others, my calculation was around 80/20 is what I came up with, based on some of the numbers in the traffic study. It was a little more of the traffic headed towards One Loudoun slightly than, than, than the 75%.
Well, other than the, the percentage of credit they're asking for on that, what is there, what is DTCI's objection? Is it just the numbers, or what?
It's not the numbers at all. It's, it's the fact that the preponderance of, the vast majority of the traffic is, is headed for One Loudoun. This is, this, this off-ramp was added to the CTP in 2019 at the request of property owners in the area through the District Board, Board Office at the time. And it was a situation where there was enough space between, between two interchanges. There was a long enough stretch of roadway that this potentially could work. And so it was added to the Countywide Transportation Plan to provide that option. It does provide a lot of, it, it, it improves the access to One Loudoun, and yes, to other developments there on the south side of the road. And in that sense- And in that sense, it's, it's more localized access in our view, so.
But it is now a CTP road on, on the plan and, and.
It is on the plan, as a partial interchange symbol on the countywide transportation plan for this, for this eastbound off-ramp.
Well, if the applicant was proposing to get a credit for the 15% or 20% of traffic going the other way, is that something DTCI could consider?
Again, I think that there are other, other routes that, that the traffic could take. This just benefits and provides more robust access to, to the site.
So it's primarily serving the project. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Lou.
Other questions? Commissioner Miller was next, I believe.
Thank you. Jackie or Lou, did the analysis of the traffic come in off of this, what the applicant would call a regional road? Did that take into consideration the amount of traffic generated by the 35,000 square foot flex industrial building this body just sent up to the board for the recommendation of approval at our last meeting that sits, I don't know, 12 feet away from this access point? In other words, it's more rhetorical question, I know it didn't, but this.
There would have been background traffic that would have accounted for something on that property.
But until the board approves that, the merit application, there is no need.
The board is just approving a modification to the building setback, not the building itself.
Without the building setback, they wouldn't have been able to build the building.
But the.
They have the potential for it.
The applicant wasn't seeking additional square footage for the building on Ashbrook. They were seeking to modify the placement of the building. So I feel like they already have approvals to build that building. They were just seeking to build it in a different location.
Location, okay, fair enough. That being said, I still, I'm happy to support a credit because I do see this as more of a, not asking for 100% credit, asking for a small portion of credit because this road will service Ashbrook and all the other areas that are around it. So I, my question was asked and answered, and it was, I asked it the wrong way, but I still support their request.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I have two questions, Jackie, or maybe you can defer them to the applicant. I was interested in the farmer's market that is, is on this property now, is an event that happens hugely popular, lots of people go there, supports our, not only rural economy, but small businesses. What, once this proposal is built, what's going to happen to the space?
I'll let the applicant answer.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jane. I'm Nick Over. I'm Vice President of Development with Kite Realty Group. We have an outstanding agreement with the farmer's market. We have no plans to change that agreement. We love the farmer's market and what it does for the project and to the points you just made. So yes, there are no plans to alter or remove the farmer's market, if that's the question. We want to keep it, we're looking at ways to even enhance it long-term.
But where will it go? I mean, where will it happen?
Well.
Because I'm looking, wait, hold on, just finish.
Sorry.
So right now, if I'm looking at where, where it's held, that will be built upon with this proposal. So, so where will the actual physical location be for the farmer's market?
Actually, sorry to say, but it will be in the location that's, today is not being built on. We host it on the road right there, on Atwater, along the outside.
Yeah, I know, I go to it.
Yeah, so that's, that's not going to, that road's not going to change and we'll continue to, to host it there. And if it doesn't work there, we've also looked at options to move it within the new retail street that we're going to be expanding and potentially close the streets down there. But we prefer, right now, we prefer the location where it's at because it has visibility to Route 7, and it would continue to stay there.
But it's, sorry, I don't, not to belabor this, this is my last question on this. It's the different individual markets, they're not actually on the road, they're on the, they're in the open space that's adjacent to the roads.
So if I can jump in?
Yeah, thank you.
Now I understand what you're saying. It's not within the curb, not on the pavement. Some of them are expanding into beyond the curb. So that area is, is, is currently approved for development today. So this doesn't change, that was always a placeholder to the extent that they use that open space area, et cetera. That's, that's not going to change. Might they have to be inside the curb as opposed to outside the curb because they're going to put a sidewalk and, and buildings in those locations? Possibly. But as Nick indicated, the farmer's market, though, as that entire area builds out, that might not be the best place for that farmer's market. It may be moved more internal to the, to the project so that you could go to the farmer's market in the morning and, you know, be much closer to the Starbucks or be much closer to the Barnes and Noble in that section of it. But, but our intention is to continue to hold the farmer's market and to be flexible with its location as we go vertical with those buildings in what we call uptown portion of, of One Loudon. We don't have necessarily a phasing that says, when we build this block, they'll have to move here, when we build this block, they'll have to move there. But it's our intention that that farmer's market will stay and will be an integral part of the fabric of One Loudon for years to come.
And I would add one other thing, Jane, is on the Route 7 side, there'll be no construction there, kind of to the, to the north there. So where people bleed out, where we have a trail right there. So that'll also be space to expand it as well.
But there's no, like, set commitment, like, X amount of space is always going to be allocated for a farmer's market?
Yeah, we.
You're saying you want to, you'd like to do it, but that's not part of the plan?
No, we're, I mean, we are not, we don't run the farmer's market ourselves. We have a third party that does that for us. And, you know, we work with him on, on the plans. And I can tell you that we have continual meetings with him and discussions on how we can continue to grow it and make it better and how it'll work long-term. And we have no, no plans to, to move away from that. It is a vital part of the project.
Okay, all right, thanks. And then one other question, Jackie. And of course, I was not here for the public hearings, maybe this was, although I couldn't find any notes on it. Parks and Recreation, what feedback do they give in terms of their ability to provide Parks and Recreation regional amenities for these additional 1,795 units?
Parks and Rec referrals usually provide an examination of what facilities are in the area now and what is planned for, if any. So they, they do just make note that this development would have an impact on those facilities, and they typically don't ask for much more beyond that.
But did they say the current, I couldn't find, maybe I just looked over and missed it, but did they say that the current facilities we have in, in this particular area could serve these additional people? And I guess, because everything I've seen in the past on them says we are, we are deficit. And that's, you concur, that's what they said, that was their referral.
I can't, I, I'll have to look at their referral again.
Okay, yeah. Well, that's just my comment on that, because I think we know what happens is we get all excited about these particular projects and what's being, what's happening within them. But then when they are approved in this suburban area, particularly in the, these districts, in my district or right next to my district, was tremendous pressure on the Parks and Recreation facilities so that what happens is they come back and say, we need additional fields, whatever, so we need to convert some of these natural areas, provide additional active recreation, like we saw with Blessed Park. So concerned about that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kirchner. Commissioner Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Just before we leave the farmer's market, sorry, have you all been to the, the Brambleton Farmer's Market is operated by the same gentleman who operates the farmer's market at One Loudon. Have you all been to that facility, familiar with it? Okay, because, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it entirely functions on the street. And they shut down a few blocks there near their downtown area? Okay. So that's something that, in addition to the north side near Route 7, where you've got a little bit of open space, is what you're kind of envisioning? If, if you were able to keep it where it currently is located on your property?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, and all of our streets, other than Russell Branch Parkway, Marblehead Drive, which are, you know, Russell Branch Parkway bifurcates the north from the south, Marblehead Drive, and then the section of Exchange Street in between those two. So from, from Russell Branch to, other than those three streets in One Loudon, all other streets are private streets, which means that depending on the association, that, some, some association within One Loudon retains the control of shutting those down as necessary for, for farmer's markets, for festivals, for carnivals, for block parties, whatever the case may be. And so that's how we can remain confident that that will continue to happen and that we've got that control.
Wonderful. Okay, question for Lou and our friends at DTCI. Is the, we talked about the CTP, the write-in access from 7 on, onto Lexington Drive, is that in, do we have funding for that in the five-year or the out-year plans yet?
There are no plans, no plans to do that. It's not in the CIP.
Okay, so it's not in the CIP, which means, is it safe to say, I hate to put words in your mouth, it's not going to be the highest priority on the CTP if it's not in the CIP as of now?
Again, it, it is not, it would, I would find it unlikely the county would be constructing that road at any point in the near future.
So that said, would you think that there's probably a more likely, more near-term need to widen or alter Route 7 near this site, particularly just east of Loudon County Parkway, where there's some discussion about widening in collector-distributor lanes leading to Route 28?
There is a CIP project to, to add that fourth eastbound lane from Loudon County Parkway to 28. That's, that's already in the, in the, in the CIP. It's still several years out.
Okay, all right. But it's, we, we're finding the funding for that, so I would, I think it's safe to say that some board has prioritized that over, over this. Okay, because you're the transportation expert, having the access on Lexington Drive, does that impact positively or negatively that traffic east of Loudon County Parkway on 7 where we're talking about? I mean, I don't see, they're probably getting off there, they're getting off before it, or they're getting off at Loudon County Parkway. They're not probably traveling beyond Loudon County Parkway.
Again, most of the traffic that would use this new exit ramp at Lexington Drive, former Lexington Drive, is destined for the One Loudon site.
Right, okay.
So they would either exit there or at one of the two existing interchanges.
Okay, thank you for confirming that, Lou. So I guess then my question to the applicant becomes, would you be willing to remove the request for the credit entirely?
Thanks. Ditto. And, and I guess you can, I mean, everybody's taught, and does anybody have any other questions? We can buy time and.
Yeah, other questions would be lovely.
Okay, all right, give them a minute, because that was my last question.
Okay. And I'll just add on to that, just for their discussion purposes, removing the, the credit would not preclude you from building it, but it would also not require you to build it should you decide you don't want it. You can decide not to build it and not get credit, or build it and not get credit.
Can you go over those options again? Because I don't know that I followed that entirely.
I'd love to.
Thank you.
But I won't, but I won't.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
Yes.
I believe Ms. Sidmore has a comment.
Yes, Ms. Sidmore. Put words in her mouth, it sounds like maybe not. Go ahead.
No, I was just confused by what you said. I think if there's a proffer in there to do something, they have to do it. If your statement was that if they take out the credit, it's up to them whether or not to keep it in the proffer or not?
Oh, my.
Is that what you're saying?
My comment, so, so I will clarify. Thank you. The clarification is, I'm not inclined, and it sounds like Commissioner Frank is not inclined, to allow them credit for this road. I'm not inclined, one way or the other, whether the road is built or not. So they're welcome to remove the entire proffer to both build the road and get credit, option one, or they can remove the proffer to get credit and still build the road should they desire to do that. Because honestly, it's in the applicant's personal best interest to have this road here. And it's in my personal opinion that the county should not provide credit for it. If the county, and Lou, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if we don't provide them credit and they decide not to build the road, that doesn't cause DTCI any concerns about a road not being built?
Again, it was placed on the CTP at the request of property owners in that area as it is largely, you know, serving, you know, as, as local access into One Loudon and the neighboring developments.
Thank you. So Colleen, sorry to put you on the spot, I think we're.
I don't think, I don't think we need to take a recess. So let, let me at least buy my client a second or two of, of thought while I say the following. One, obviously, we did reduce the amount of credit that we were seeking from 100% down to 25%. We did that based on this math. Our, our traffic study indicated that there are 7,500 trips going east on Route 7 every single day that would use the write-in. 2,000 of those would go to Ashbrook, either the Ashbrook Flex Industrial that Merit has, or other points other than One Loudon. We took those as the regional trips. That's 20, 26% of, 2,000 of 7,500 is 26%, which is why we asked for 25% credit. We also asked for credit, I will say, because this project, this proposal, as it sits before you this evening, is an overall reduction in the amount of trips that are, that are, that would be expected at One Loudon. Meaning, we worked very hard to stay not just trip neutral, but slightly trip negative, such that if we did not do this, we would be expected to, to deliver a whole lot more traffic, a whole lot more traffic impacts without any additional traffic benefit. We are also making other improvements, we think that are, that are, that we're not asking for credit for, but we did feel that this was one that was regional in nature and on the CTP as a, as a recommended improvement. That said, one question is, is there, back to the commission, is there any number between 25% and 0% that would be satisfactory to the commission?
I'm not going to ask for a straw poll, but I'll allow anybody to respond if they choose, if they so choose.
Okay, sure.
Commissioner Barnes?
Zero.
Commissioner Miller?
Well, I have a question. My, my vote, straw poll and the comment on this would be the 25% because this road is going to serve other developments. But the question I have, directly to Mr. Over, is this road something that you contemplated, that Kite contemplated in this development process? Or did this road come about because the existing residents came to you and said, hey, we know that you, we could get 3 million square feet of office there? Or, hey, could you help us out with a road?
I would say that we, I would say it's a combination of that. I think it's fair to say that we, I'm not going to sit here and say that we don't want that road there. We definitely want people to, from the west, to come to One Loudon and have an easy way to get in, and an alternative way to get in. As a retail, primarily retail developer, we're always looking for great access to, for our tenants. I also would say we've had, I've probably lost count of how many meetings we've had with the community over working with them in this process to be collaborative and to have a plan that they support, which they do support our plan here, and they are in support of this write-in. I don't know if that answered your question, but you know, that's.
To some degree, so it's kind of a, you wanted it, they really wanted it also, and that's, that was, put you over the top to say, we'll go ahead and build it. But since it does service other areas, since it does service the farmer's market, or will even more, which obviously is a regional thing, as we're coming from Algonkin to go there, that this does warrant a, well, she can go or come around, she's going to, she can go to Leesburg and come down, after breakfast at Leesburg, she can come out. So I guess to, to my point is that this is a, this road serves other things than just One Loudon. It is a benefit to One Loudon, of course, but they're not asking for 100% credit. They're asking for a small credit relative to the amount of traffic that will use this and go other places. And if it's 25, if it's not 25, now we're splitting hairs between 17 and 19%, whatever it may be. So I, I would support their 25% credit request.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Commissioner Combs?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So Jackie, I just want to make sure I understand the nature of the way this plays out in the proffer. So they, if they build that, if they build that improvement, then they come in with proof of their cost for building that improvement, and whatever zoning permits remain to be sought, they would get a credit against whatever is left. So it wouldn't be applied retroactively, it would just apply to whatever is out in front of them.
Right.
Do we have a sense of, and I have, I'm sure all the information is in here, I just haven't synthesized it, but do we have a sense of what is the approximate dollar amount of that credit, and how that plays out over the remaining zoning permits to be issued?
No, and sometimes we do it differently. If an applicant doesn't know how much something is going to cost, we would prefer them not to have a dollar figure in the proffers, because they would be requesting something that they think they're entitled to. It's a lot easier for proffer management to enforce this, this way. If we have verifiable costs of what it would cost, then we can figure out exactly what is 25% of that. That won't happen until much later in the process, though.
Okay, I was just wondering if there's a way...
But I don't think that we've talked about numbers at all for how much that would cost.
Okay, fair enough. Colleen, do you guys, do you all have any sense of...
We do, we do.
Approximate cost?
We think it's about...
How that plays out over future zoning permits to be sought?
Yeah, so, you can do the math now. We think that, we think that the cost of this improvement is anywhere from four, could be as high as $6 million in today's value. So when we were thinking about it, we were thinking it's a million-dollar credit. So if you take a million-dollar credit, we've got to do this improvement by the 400th permit, that means that we're at 1345, so it's a million divided by 1345, and so that would be a reduction in the credit by $743 per unit of those remaining units, on a per-unit basis. What I just spoke with Mr. Over about is, we'd be willing to cap the credit at a million dollars in today's dollars. And just, just, we know that it's not certain, that's less than 25%. If it's 6 million, it's exactly 25%. If it's $4 million, and that, over the remainder of the units, because it's required by 400, that would be over 1,345 units and roughly $743 of credit that would be allocated. And that's not that much money. I know it doesn't seem, it's some, I know I've had conversations with some of you, and you go, if it's not that much money, just let it go. But, but we do, we do come back to, it is a regional improvement. We have done a lot of, over the life of this project, have done a lot of regional improvements, and we do feel like it's an appropriate share.
And just one final question, the credit is against the regional road improvement, not anything else?
Yes, exactly. It's not against schools, it's not against fire and rescue, mental health, et cetera. It's, and, and just, just for those, for the benefit of those that have not been on the commission that long, One Loudoun, with its initial proffer package and subsequent proffer package, did things such as the construction of Russell Branch Parkway from Loudoun County Parkway to its western boundary, the reconstruction of Marblehead Drive through the center of its site. It also dedicated, it also constructed the Ashburn Village Boulevard and Route Seven interchange. It gave right-of-way for the widening of Route 607 of Loudoun County Parkway. And that's in addition to some of the other things, like the dedication of the school site for Stuart Weller Elementary. So the proffer package initially was significant, and, and again, just, it was intended to more than cover the impacts of the full build out of the project. So I offer it as something that we're just kind of spitballing about right now, and apologies for not getting it to staff and to you all sooner, but, but wonder if that would be something that would be palatable to you all.
Mr. Vice Chair, can I ask for, just to repeat?
Yes.
Are we saying, or are you saying that the credit would represent a reduction in the per-unit regional road contribution of $743?
In today dollars, yep.
In today dollars?
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
Exactly. And let me be very clear, I just want to be, just because you're making me do math, word math, word problems, on the fly. I just want to be very, very clear, I'm not, that's $743 over, over 1,345 units. If it's spread against the full entitlement, it's even less of a reduction in the, in the regional transportation, because it would be 17, it would be $1 million divided by 1,745 units, and that number would be $573. So just, it'd be even less if we spread it out against all of them.
You're not spreading it out against all of them?
I was not, yeah, but I just wanted to be clear with, you asked for clarification, I want to make sure I was 100% clear.
Other questions? Commissioner Barnes?
Yeah, I just have a small one. But you're gonna have to build this road to build this development that you're trying to build, right?
No.
No.
You don't have to have that road?
We do not need it.
What you're trying to do?
No, yeah.
Other questions? Okay, so this is in the Broadrun District. Commissioner Frank, what would you like to do?
I have a motion. I move that the Planning Commission forward ZCPA 2021-0002 and ZMOD 2021-0032, One Loudoun to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of approval, subject to the proffer statement dated June 15th, including the applicant agreeing to revise the proffer statement to eliminate the credit request for the right-in at Lexington Drive and do account for the provision of the right-in access in the event BDOT does not approve the justification for access point requests and the conditions of approval dated July 6, 2022, provided as attachments one and two to the July 14, 2022 Planning Commission Work Session Memorandum, and based on the following findings for approval. Number one, the application is in conformance of the land use policies of the suburban mixed-use place type as recommended in the Loudoun County 2019 General Plan. Number two, the application proposes natural resource protection measures in the form of a tree conservation areas and low-impact development techniques for stormwater management as recommended in the 2019 General Plan.
Is there a second? That'll be a second by Commissioner Salmon. Commissioner Frank, would you like to have an opening?
I, I would, and I will try to keep it fairly brief here. In addition to the findings, you know, we really do need smaller residential units of this type that'll actually be built in already developing, thriving development, in kind of the right location, which I do believe this is. And I think that this is the best way to make that happen, to meet our already existing need. But I will say, I'm not comfortable with the policy exception of issuing that credit when it really is primarily for the benefit of this development to have that road. So that is, that is why that is in the motion. As I said earlier, there's plenty of nice things on the CTP, and lots of great things on our wish list that we'd love to have, but when we've got Route Seven that needs widened, and collector-distributor lanes that need refined and fixed, and things that are a more urgent need, I just, even if it's a million dollars, I don't like pulling money away from those kind of things, to put it on something that is gonna benefit a few people over on another area that we've, DTCI is telling us is just not as pressing of a need. So, I don't think it dictates, it warrants deviating from the policy.
Thank you, Commissioner Frank. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. I will, I'm gonna support the motion, although not, I'm supporting the motion, but I don't want it to meet the belief that I support not giving them the credit. I certainly would have supported giving them the credit. In fact, I think we should call Michael Larkin at Ashbrook and tell them that we're gonna, we come off of Lexington and make the right turn, we're gonna put a nickel toll there, so that all those people can pay a toll until they get to a million dollars. But I do want to comment on something that I'm, I'm gonna guess that Commissioner Kirchner may comment on, and I agree with her that, and I've said this before, there's potentially 7,000 units coming in this corridor from Route 28 to Belmont Ridge Road, and there is an issue with how do you find land for all the other things that go with all these people? And I've often commented that at some point, one application is gonna be the last man standing, and they're gonna get the brunt of all the land necessary to do the things they do. To that end, in this particular case, one, and Mr. Over and I have had this conversation before, I think if we had an opportunity to work with this application much earlier, along with staff, that we could have found some things like that that the county needed. And it's still possible, like for example, we've talked about a library, a replacement for the Ashburn Library one day, of, you know, thrice the size of the current one. Things like that, which are still possible, but that's not the purview of staff, staff's just looking at what, how the plan works. So things like that, we need to, we do need to work with applicants very early on to try and accommodate the things that we will need when we add 7,000 potential residential units. Now, where I will deviate from that in this instance is, yes, we need the land to do those things for the parks and the fields and all that nature, but at the same time, this particular application provides a, a, a parallel need, and that is rooftops and opportunity to grow the retail segment of Loudoun County. And One Loudoun, for better or for worse, is the best retail we have, potential retail we have, frankly outside the town of Middleburg, to grow and develop, and that amenity, that service, oh, it is, Middleburg's a great spot. That service...
Middleburg, okay.
Is, is, is very needed for the county to grow the economic development base, to grow the business base, so that we can have those things, and be less reliant on other types of, of, of commercial things, i.e. data centers. So while I certainly agree with her comments from before, Ms. Kirchner's comments from before, I would say that this particular application meets a parallel need, and I fully support that, and, and I don't know, I don't want to take any thunder from the applicant, but I think there's a pretty good retailer coming, maybe in advance of all of this, so if he wants to tell us later, he can. But, so yeah, I certainly support this, and I hope everybody else will as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Barnes?
Michelle, did you take the 1 million off?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I will support it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kirchner?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Yeah, I just want to sort of continue my comments about what I consider as a blind spot, when we're, when these things are coming through, and relative to these needs, particularly parks and recreation. I just looked, I found the Parks and Recreation referral, and, you know, what they state is that this area is very in need of, sorry, I'm just gonna get to my point here, that there is, they're really in jeopardy in terms of a capacity perspective from Parks and Recreation. It says residents from both buy right and rezone subdivisions, and a significant demand on existing recreation facilities, which make it difficult to keep pace with respective service demands. This application alone will have an immediate impact on existing public recreational facilities in the area. So just to underscore again, because it, you know, it's people in my district, my communities that are, that are gonna feel the impact of this. I don't think we've done a very good job of finding a way to deal with it. I don't, you know, I think staff has done a good job, I think the applicant has done what they could, but, you know, and as you all went through with me with Blessed Park, that was really painful. I don't think anybody wanted to be in that situation, where we had this wonderful, natural, open area that many people valued for the natural assets, the nature that everyone is increasingly knowing is so important to have as a part of our community, particularly in our suburban areas. And we had to lose a part of that, and we're losing other parts of that in the eastern part of the county, because we have more people coming in, and we have these needs for active recreation, and we've done a terrible job of figuring out what to do about that. It seems like we have all these, and I, and Commissioner Miller, I mean, I love that you and I oftentimes have sort of similar conversations, but different outcomes. But yeah, I mean, I agree, a parallel need, you know, retail, I agree with that, but, but I, it really concerns me that it's, that ultimately comes at the expense of another need, and that oftentimes, as I often talk about, is our environmental and our natural resources. So I wish that there was a better way, I mean, I just, you know, this happened with other applications, it's like, everybody's like, yeah, this is too bad, I wish we could have done something about it, yes, it's a bad impact, but nothing, we're not doing anything about it. We have these capital facilities, contributions, that go to Parks and Recreation, and they're not using it to, what they end up doing is they just put more structures somewhere, they're not acquiring land, it's not going, it's not set up in a way to get the land, get the space that we need for the demands that we know are gonna come from all these new people. And I know, like I said, you know, ultimately, that's gonna come back in the future in a very detrimental way. Everything else in here is fantastic, I'm so happy to hear about the farmer's market, because I know that's a great community asset. I mean, as you can tell, I, you know, I focus on the existing community, the people, the people that live here, and, you know, what the things are that are really important to them, that really make it a community. So I'm happy to see so many of those things that happened here, but I am like really distraught that we just continue to approve these units so close to my district, that impact my district, and just kind of don't do anything about some of these things that are so important with our natural, environmental areas. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirchner. Commissioner Combs?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'm gonna support the motion. I had some hesitancy, and seconded it because I wanted to think about that credit issue. I think there is regional, there is regional benefit here beyond One Loudoun, and I think we could have explored some percentage, well, lower than 25%, greater than zero, with a cap at fixed dollar amount. I think there was room for that, but I don't want that to hold up my support of, otherwise, I think a great application, and so compliments to staff and the applicant for all that was done on this. Commissioner Kirchner's point, I think, is something we take to heart, and I think we explore that at a more holistic level, for sure. But otherwise, a really nice application, happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Combs. My brief comments are, I think we need to be careful, we spend a lot of time working on one little issue, one little problem, but we're, want to make sure that we, we see the forest through the trees here. This is a great application. This does have a huge amount of open space in it. It's amazing, I think I got a call from the applicant one time, and we went through several applications, and I'm like, oh yeah, this is the one with 37 different little parks in it. And it's probably not 37, but there's a lot of parks in this whole area, and I think that's a big benefit. Does it, is it, does it have a pollinator garden, are there gonna be butterflies everywhere? No, there's not. Are there gonna be huge soccer fields, which I love soccer fields? No, there's not. But this is a great application, it's got a lot of houses in it, but it's still a good application, it still has, and checks off lots and lots and lots of boxes. So let's do our job and, and get into those details, and try to make sure that we don't use money that, that's probably inappropriate for this, instead of somewhere else that's more appropriate, but it's still a good application, and with that, I will approve it. Commissioner Frank, you have closing.
No, I think you just gave it for me.
I'll, I'll send you the invoice. It'll be at...
25% of a road.
It'll be at Blackhoff in 20 minutes.
You got 29 minutes.
Okay, with that, I'll ask, and with that, I'll ask a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes 711, with Commissioner Kirchner opposed, and Commissioner Hayes absent.
Thank you all so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a great trip. And our next application, sorry Pat, will be ZCPA 2021-0001, Dulles High Point. Mr. Bryce, Mr. Johnson, welcome back.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bryce Johnson, I'm the County Project Manager for the Dulles High Point Project. There's no update since the packet went out. If you want my presentation, you're happy to have it. The applicant also has a presentation, if you'd prefer theirs. I'll leave it up to you guys.
Do you want anything?
Or do you want anything?
I think, I think folks need to, it is a little unconventional, but who has the shorter briefing? Because I think it is a pretty easy one to explain, I...
The applicant...
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we make it worth Molly's time to stick around? Go ahead, and, yeah. Can you display at least?
The screen, that would make sense.
Yes, Ms. Navatney, please.
For, for the record, my name is Molly Navatney, I'm an urban planner at Cooley, and I'm pinch hitting tonight for Mark Looney. This application is a little bit more unconventional, because it did not have a public hearing, it came straight to work session. Next slide. It's a ZCPA for data centers that are already built. As part of this original application, two bus shelters were proffered, and pads for those two bus shelters have been approved and installed. Next slide. Next slide. Those bus shelter pads are right there. When the applicant went to go and install the bus shelters, the county said, there are two triggers. One is that bus service needs to be serving the property. And the other is that the data center, that, that they've reached completion of the data center buildings. Bus, there is bus service along this property, but it doesn't stop at this property. It goes right to the metro station. So it's not really serving the property. When the, when the applicant went to go and install the bus shelters, county staff said, we don't want the bus shelters. Those pads are in the right-of-way. County staff doesn't maintain bus shelters in the right-of-way. They would have needed to get a state permit to do it. We can't put them outside of the right-of-way because there are easements that would push those bus pads 60 feet back from the right-of-way and just overcomplicate things. So DTCI said, we don't need the bus shelters. So we are here just to amend the proffer that would remove the requirement to install the bus shelters. The applicant was very happy to install the bus shelters, but nobody wanted them.
Thank you, Molly. In Jeff's absence, any questions amongst the Commissioners?
No, I think, I, I hope that Molly, they don't mind you sharing this because I know Mark certainly shared it with me when we had our, our briefing on it. But I think it's just helpful for everybody to know, the applicant at this point has invested enough money in pouring the pads and going through this for however many months, this back and forth on the bus shelters has been going on, that they could have more than built these bus shelters. Like, this is really not them trying to get out of bill- We could have had bus shelters all along this road. All right. And, and VDOT has weighed in, and they don't like it again because of the right-of-way and the sepa. Okay. Nobody wants the bus shelters. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant or staff? This being in the broad run? Commissioner Frank, motion, please?
Yes, sir. I move that the Planning Commission forward ZCPA 2021-0001 Dulles High Point to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval subject to the proffer statement dated June 27, 2022, and based on the findings for approval provided as attachments one and two to the July 14, 2022 Planning Commission Work Session Memorandum.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Frank, properly seconded by Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Frank, any opening?
No, I, nope, I think we're good.
Any comments?
I have a, actually have a comment.
Questions?
Just a comment. I, I will certainly support this. Let's just be a cautionary tale, however. This is eight years ago that this application was approved. Things happen, things change. The more prescriptive we are from day one, the more likely we are to end up with a change that requires money, time, and, and I'm sure Ms. Kirchner will agree, wasted, impervious space. That is all.
Any other questions or questions? Commissioner Kirchner?
I concur with Commissioner Miller.
Okay. Okay. If there's no other comments, then we'll ask for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 801 with Commissioner Hayes absent. Our next application is a, not an application, it's a discussion item for CPAM 2020-0002 Red Hill. And I propose that Mr. Giglio will adjudicate this quickly.
Sure, I'll give you a quick overview. I'll give you a quick overview. And we've got some graphics along with it that will help explain this. I know some of the Commissioners are familiar with this area already, but for some of the new members, I'll get you up to speed on that. So to start with, the board initiated the CPAM back in December 1, 2020. And this followed a CPAM that approved the extension of utilities to the area as well as established a middle school site on county-owned property within the Red Hill community. The board during the deliberations recommended the board a broader land use evaluation of the Red Hill community to consider moving the area from the RPA to the TPA, recognizing its unique geographic location and the presence of central utilities surrounding the area. So the Red Hill community is located on the far eastern boundary of the RPA. It's bordered to the northwest by Green Mill Preserve, on the east by Evergreen Mills Road, and on the south by the watershed boundary of the Goose Creek, which is the present boundary between the RPA and the TPA. The Red Hill community is comprised of about 41 parcels totaling 424 acres. The area is rural in character with large parcels in either agricultural or equine or forested open space with smaller residential lots concentrated along Red Hill Road. Approximately 173 acres of, or 40% of the total area within the Red Hill community is owned by the county and is currently being developed with a middle school site, which is scheduled to open in the fall of 2024. You can see the boundaries of the county-owned property, which are highlighted in purple on the, the graphic on the screen. So the Board of Supervisors, at their May 17, 2020 Business Meeting, reviewed and approved a work plan for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to consider a change to the policy area and planned land use designation for the Red Hill community that would move the area from the RPA to the TPA, designate the Red Hill community as a new TPA subarea, and change the community designation from the rural north place type to the transition large lot neighborhood place type, which includes a planned residential density of one dwelling unit per three acres. The transition large lot neighborhood is the predominant place type within the TPA and forms the edge along the majority of the RPA. The place type is characterized by clustered residential development with large areas of open space comprising a minimum of 50% of the development area. The existing development pattern within Willisford, located the south of the Red Hill community, is depicted in pale yellow on the screen. And it illustrates the low-density clustered residential development pattern that characterizes the transition large lot neighborhood place type. The proposed designation as, as the transition large lot neighborhood place type in creation of the Red Hill TPA subarea with a planned density of one dwelling unit per three acres recognizes the underlying A3 zoning of all the properties within the Red Hill community and will result in no net increase in potential density for the, for this area. Also, moving the area into the TPA would allow for the future extension of central utilities to serve the area as properties are developed. All the properties surrounding the Red Hill community, including Green Mill Preserve, which is located in the RPA, are currently served by central utilities. So the work plan adopted by the board is anticipated to take 11 months to complete, with a PC hearing scheduled in October, following by, by subsequent PC work sessions. The Board of Supervisors is anticipated to take final action on the CPAM in the first quarter of 2023. So we've already conducted one virtual community meeting, which was held last week on July 6. Six members of the public provided comment. Most of the, the speakers were residents of the Red Hill community and expressed concern with the development of the school and recommended that the county consider increasing residential densities for the area. As a follow-up to the community meeting with residents is also planned in September prior to the PC public hearing. So included in your packets were some draft language, which includes the proposal to bring the Red Hill area into the transition or designated as a transition large lot neighborhood subarea, and also a series of maps which depict the changes proposed to bring the area into the, the TPA. So with that concludes the briefing. And at this point, I'm open for any comments or questions.
I'll start with the first question, which is, are you looking for the view of the Planning Commission at this time? Or this is just an informational session?
This, it's open, whatever information you'd like to provide. We're actually in the analysis stage right now. You've seen, we've drafted text language and maps that are required to make the changes to bring it into, to the TPA. And so any feedback as we kind of develop it would be appreciated.
Very well. Commissioner Kirchner?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So I have two questions. In looking at this, if you could tell me briefly, why was this included in the rural area to begin with?
No, you're, you're-
I mean, because I look at that, and there's like, it's like, you, you have this big section, then you have this little tail from here.
So-
If there's, if there's like a short-
The short answer is, our rural policy area was defined by watersheds. And so that little area that you see follows the, the watershed of the Goose Creek, which is the RPA boundaries. That's the quick answer.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Okay, my second question is, so I'm looking at the proposed, new proposed language in attachment one here in our, in our packet. So it says, Red Hill target residential density, one dwelling unit per three acres. Why, why that versus one per 10 or one per one?
So the, the density recommendation is based on maintaining the existing A3 zoning base density that's already out there. Plus, it also corresponds with the properties to the south, which in Willisford are also one dwelling unit per three acres. So what it's doing is carrying over, for consistency, those densities as we, we look across those areas.
Okay. And sorry for my past Planning Commission knowledge that maybe is not upgraded, but in the, in the transfer, the transition area, the residential densities can go from one per one to one to 10?
That's correct.
Okay. So why did you not consider doing one per 10? Which would, I mean, everyone who's on one per three, they're already, they're grandfathered in there, right?
Right, so-
And that would, wait, let me just, and that would help give that protection, I think it sounds like was intended with the, when they were included in the rural area.
So that's-
Initially.
So right now, there is no proposal to change the base density. So regardless of the targeted density, the one dwelling unit per three acres is that existing density on the ground. And we're merely mimicking, mimicking that with the proposed subarea densities.
Okay, but you see what I'm saying? Like, if you want one-
But, right, so to, to designate it at a density of one dwelling unit per 10 acres wouldn't, wouldn't change anything because we would maintain the, the base density there.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So it's, it keeps its status quo. There's the easy answer.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller.
So a couple of things. One, this section, is it the entirety of Land Bay Q? Is that what it was? Land Bay Q that was-
Q1.
Q1? Is this the entirety of Q1? Or is this just a portion of it?
So for everybody's reference, we're referring to areas that were discussed while we were reviewing the adoption of the 2019 General Plan. But yes, that is the same area.
Okay. And just to comment along Supervisor, Commissioner, Commissioner Kirchner's comments. And when asked, why was this like that? And you commented that because at the time, the, we divided it up by watersheds. And this is the boundary, the Broadway watershed. I find that, back to the general conversation of the General Plan days, a little disingenuous because we did not use the western boundary of the Lower Goose Creek watershed as any sort of policy line. We used a road in between that. But that's just for another day and time of thought.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Frank?
So looking at the subject area, and I'm, I've not got the right map in front of me either. I'm on page three. But when you, when you take out, just, we're talking about the one to three acres versus a one to 10 acre. You take out the LCPS portion, which is a large amount of this acreage. And then you take the, I'm going to guess they're already not really on three acre lots, a lot of the existing homes that are in that Red Hill neighborhood. You take out what's developed and you, and what's LCPS. About how much of that-
So there's 251 acres that are left. Portions of that in Red Hill Manor are also under easement, so that that would not be developable either.
Okay.
But in looking at it, there are a number of very small lots that comprise the majority of the remainder of the Red Hill area that's not, you know, already dedicated by the school.
That one was a good one, with the purple, sorry.
Whoops, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're okay.
I was going to go back to our other that shows the school, the school site.
Yes, that. Okay. So I mean, if we were to, I guess what I'm trying to, to further on with Commissioner Kirchner's, you know, train of thought, I think, I'm not going to guess where she was going, but where my brain went, was really, though, when you take LCPS out, you take the, the stuff that is not developable out, you take what's already there out, there's really not a lot left to impact. If we were trying to not maintain the status quo, as you said, we were trying to create a bigger buffer. There's really, there's not a lot left, I guess, is, of this piece that we could really impact if we made a change like that.
That's correct. When you look at it, there are a few larger parcels. But for the most part, for anything to be developed there in the future would require some consolidation of those existing lots, smaller lots that are out there to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Frank. Commissioner Merythu?
I have a, a few questions on, going back to the public meeting, was there any discussion about density in this area?
There was, and some of them asked for increased residential density.
Right. I'm getting, as I mentioned earlier in my disclosures, calls about increasing the density in the area in order to facilitate properties extending sewer and water to their property, that sort of thing. And I, I have a, and, and I'm going to make this as part of a request that when this comes back to the Planning Commission, that there be a comparative analysis of the small lot option as well as the large lot option. I think it's only fair to look at that, given the conditions in this area. I mean, there's been investment in transportation improvements. You have the school investment. You have the community park investment that's less than two miles away to the south. It just seems like, and I, I do recall the conversation during the plan discussion about bringing this in, that it, it is closer to suburban amenities and services than a lot of other areas of transit, transit, transition policy area, transition policy area. And should be looked at as a possible compact type of development. So if the Commission's agreeable to it, or if you need a Commission direction on that, I, I-
No, we can provide that. And just for information, the trans, the small lot transition neighborhood that we're referring to actually has a density of four dwelling units per acre, which is equivalent to some of our densities in our suburban policy area.
You have small lot designation right across the road, right?
That's correct. So you'll see that Arcola Farms piece there. So if we go back and look at this place type map, you can see the tan color that's up there is the transition small lot. And that was designated because a large portion of that area was already, had been developed as part of the Brambleton development. So we had those densities there. And there's currently an active application for Arcola Farms that you see there that is-
And those, those property owners have sort of come together on that application?
There are still some missing pieces in there. But yeah, they have consolidated a few, a significant number of lots there for the remainder that was not part of the Brambleton development.
Well, nonetheless, I think we should have at least a comparison.
Right. We're happy to provide that analysis. And, you know, we're in that process right now as we're developing the, the remainder of the CPAM.
The other thing I didn't see in the, in the plan amendment was the phasing policy of the transition policy area specifies subareas that are in phase one versus phase two. I'm not sure if that's significant, but it would seem you would want to put this area into one of those-
As we discussed, the phasing, okay.
Yeah.
That's really only going to be relevant if the place type is something other than large lot. At large lot, the phasing doesn't make a difference.
Well, then we might want to incorporate it, at least for advertising the CPAM, to make sure we can talk about it. Just to make sure we cover the bases. If we don't need it, we don't need it, but, okay.
Thank you. That's it. That's it. Thank you, Commissioner Merythu. Commissioner Combs?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Pat, quick question on the, this boundary line here that's drawn, and then those parcels right there. You mentioned easements or some, I'm wondering what the, the rationale is for drawing those, that line there.
So that line is actually the break, if you take a look at Green Mill Preserve, which is there.
The rest association.
That big green area you see along the edge of Green Mill Preserve is all there, you can see it right here. So all of that is under conservation easement. So it creates a hard edge up against the Red Hill community. And so that's why that boundary was drawn there.
Got it, okay. So even those, that-
Yeah, so all that that's hatched green has conservation easements on it.
Okay.
And is part of the open space area there.
Okay, thank you. And then just a, a comment. We had the CPAM for extending the utilities into the RPA. And I have a recollection of expressing concern back then about the precedent of extending utilities across that line and what, what sort of precedent that might set. and what, what sort of precedent that might set. And the discussion was, it almost might be better not to set that precedent and then look at doing this instead, but now we're looking at establishing two, in my mind, unfavorable precedents, when if this had been thought through more holistically at the time, we could have ventured to only make one of those. So I'm sort of sad to see we're in this predicament now, but I understand we are. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Any further comments?
Yeah, I would, just to, to reply to, you guys, I'm going to go very slowly. To comment, to, to reply to Commissioner Combs, if I remember correctly, we, we may have sent this up to the board, the school site, but with a very strongly word, because I think I may have made the motion, to say, this is the wrong way to do things. We, I'm pretty sure we did it with approval, but saying, this is not how it should have been done. We should have looked at the whole Q, Q1, and frankly, maybe even looked at the whole way, all the way up to Battlefield, but at least it's a CPAM and a start. That's what I would say. I, I recognize the precedent. Hopefully, this way of doing it undoes the precedent that the board did by giving us the, just saying, you know what I'm saying? So that's-
Great. Thank you. I think with that, Pat, we're done, so-
Yeah, appreciate it.
And thanks for the, thanks for the, the presentation.
Yep. We'll see you guys in October.
Okay. All right, our final quick application is ZMAP 2021-0012, Compass Creek Section 4. Mr. Bryce, you're up.
While they're setting up, I do want to note that staff did present Q1 as a transition policy during the planning process. That option was out there, so.
In fact, I think, Mr. Salmon, did you send it up to the board with Q1 in?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Surprise, surprise. Mr. Johnson.
So again, my name is Bryce Johnson. I'm the county project manager for the Compass Creek Section 4 application. This was before the Planning Commission at the June public hearing. Since then, the applicant has worked with staff to resolve the outstanding issue regarding committing to ensure the completion of a proffered roadway construction. So staff identifies no further outstanding issues. I'm happy to give a fuller presentation. I'm sure the applicant would also be happy to give a complete presentation, but otherwise, I'm happy to answer questions.
That sounds really, really exciting, but I just have one question for Courtney. From a legal perspective, the county attorney's office is good with the language as is. You were okay with it at the last meeting, so just wanted to clarify.
I'll say yes to your first question. I don't agree with the second statement, but yes to the first question.
And I agree with Mrs. Sintra's answer to both your questions.
Very well. Commissioner Barnes.
Yes, I just want to ask, staff, did you get the, thing, legal thing done with-
Yeah, we wouldn't be recommending approval if we weren't satisfied with where we're at today.
Okay, you satisfied, thank you. Commissioner Frank.
No, no, I just want, proffer management's on board.
Yes.
Excellent.
Okay. District is for Commissioner Miller, please.
In the interest of three minutes, I move the Planning Commission forward ZMAP 2021-0012, Compass Creek, Section 4, to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval, subject to the proffer statement dated July 12, 2022, and based on the findings for approval provided as attachments 1 and 2 to the July 14, 2022 Planning Commission Work Session Supplemental Memorandum.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Miller and seconded by Commissioner Frank.
It was ready to go 10 days ago. It's better now, and the end user is going to pay for it one way or the other, so thank you, we got this done.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 8-0-1. Commissioner Hayes opposed, and we are, Commissioner-
Absent.
Commissioner Hayes absent. Mr. Galindo, you have 1 minute and 37 seconds.
Or, or a big tab.
Just a reminder that your next work session is actually next Wednesday, special called work session on Rivana, and we will be sending that packet out in the morning.
Thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned.